Okay, excellent.
Y'all back, I apologize.
Okay.
These computers have a mind of their own sometimes. So I tell you what, hi Tracy. Tracy, can you hear me? Okay, we're gonna start this over, okay? We're gonna do a do-over. And my hope is, we will not get the same. Hello folks, this is Brian Harris with the Independent Black Voters on Facebook. As we continue our series of "Let's Get to Know the Candidates." Today, we're gonna be talking about education and the school board. And we're fortunate to have here Lisa Guzman, who is running for school board. And actually, in my area, the Henderson area. And I have my crew here, I have an educational crew we put together here. And we have Ms. Camilla Bywaters, how are you?
I'm well, thank you.
And we have Ms. Tracy Lewis, how are you? How are you? She's okay.
Well, thank you, my apologies.
And we have Ms. Lisa Guzman, who is again, running for school board. And she's graced us with the time to talk a little bit about what's going on in the school system. And talk to us about what, from the view of the independent black voter, we believe needs to change, so that we can have better education and better opportunities for all, but specifically for the undeserved, underserved, which now seems to be the black community. So thank you Lisa, for coming on, first of all.
Thank you for having me, I'm really excited.
Great, tell us a little bit about you. And tell us a little bit about the school board, the location, what area that you're servicing, and why you're running for school board.
Okay, so a little bit about me. I am the Assistant Executive Director to the Nevada State Education Association. Because I'm the Assistant Executive Director, I'm also the Executive Director of the Education Support Employees Association, which we call it ESEA. So I'm the Executive Director of ESEA. And my educational background is that I started as a paraprofessional. And I worked my way through college, and I ended up being in education, I'm sorry, in English as a second language teacher. My district, which is a fabulous district, we run from Henderson down to Searchlight, all the way down to Laughlin. So it's a pretty large area. And I'm excited to represent them, I hope I get to represent them. You're on mute.
Let me turn that on. Great, we're glad to have you on here, because obviously, there are a lot of issues overall with the COVID-19, combined with the existing issues that are going on with the school system. This is a big, big plate to fill. There's gonna be a lot of things happening, and we need to have a strong, united school board, that is looking at what's going on now, what's going into the future. But also, how do we give equal educational opportunities to all? With specifically focused in here to talk about the black community, which we believe is being underserved in many aspects. How do we also deal with the business side of the school board? And we'll talk about that after we talk about the educational. So give me your opinions right now, Lisa, is what? Before we talk about the issues that we think are prevalent, what do you think are the prevalent issues opporunities to improve the school board right now?
So that's a really great question, because with COVID, we are now going to digital learning for the next nine weeks. And distance learning is a challenge for us. I had a conversation with a really great guy from Make It Work. And one of the ideas that the education community had was to have Wi-Fi buses, so that we could reach underprivileged areas with Wi-Fi, right? And I represent those folks, the education support employees. So I thought this was a really great idea, until he told me that sometimes the Wi-Fi on the buses don't work. Sometimes they last only 90 minutes. But the kids actually had to get on the buses, so that it would work. That's ridiculous. And so I felt that that was a disservice to the community. It was a disservice to the child. Because I'm sure the teacher on the other end didn't know why the child wasn't turning in the work. So we have that digital divide. And then, we also have the fact that they may not have Chromebooks, right? So we have at least 128,000 kids that don't have Chromebooks. That's a lot of kids when there are 320,000 students, right? I mean, if you think about it. So knowing that there's that one-to-one that they need to have, and those students don't have it, that's huge. And as a school board member, it would be my job to make sure that the legislature was actually making sure that my students had those Chromebooks, had the Wi-Fi that they need. Luckily, the governor is already looking into it. And he's, he and our Attorney General are making sure that there's going to be Wi-Fi. Is it going to be effective? We don't know. We'll never know until we start. It's like on the first day of school, everybody has these great dreams for the school year. And then we don't know what happens, you know, until it happens. So my hope is that the MiFi's that the Clark County School District has purchased, and the agreement with T-Mobile and with Cox Communication does allow for students to be able to connect. But to me, that is probably the greatest divide. Now with black and brown students, I think their biggest divide is that they don't have role models in the school district. I don't know if they have an issue with the digital divide, I would like to know that. But what I do know is that when I walk into a school, and when I talk to people, I've only met four principals that are African-American, four. We have 500 sites. To me, that's an issue. And if people don't see that as an issue, then I don't understand their point of view. Both my, I'm married to a Mexican gentleman, and both my kids are Mexican. And I wanted them to have role models in the classroom. And that is a really important issue for me as a parent. It should be for all parents. When I was a teacher, I didn't wear jeans and a t-shirt, because I knew I was being a role model to my students. I mean, there are lots of things that you know, you just think through in an educational community. And so, those are the types of things that I think of. The teacher is a role model, so is a principal, so is a vice principal, so is a dean. And they have to realize that students try to see themselves in who their role models are. Absolutely.
And it's interesting you say that, because many of the roles that, in the levels, it seems like they go to black men, are their deans, they're the enforcers. They're the ones who come out and administer the punishment, or control the rowdy children, versus, like you say, the principals and etc. And you're exactly right. We started this conversation, and as I said, a little bit, I don't usually talk about my background, but in education, I think it's important people to know. I have an undergrad in electrical engineering technology for Purdue University. I have an MBA also for Purdue University. I went to school in Gary Roosevelt, that was predominantly black. And my teachers looked like me. And there is a difference when they look like you. There's a difference when you have their culture, and they're not just in the rules of the enforcers, but they are the teachers, the principals, etc. You are 100% correct. Then when we have a system this large, if the black community is 13%, and I'm a believer of this, if we're 13% of the populace, we should reflect at least 13% throughout the roles. Not just as the hall guards, the monitors, and stuff like that. Throughout, all the way up from the principal to the vice principal, etc. You should see that type of a correlation, because you are 100% right. When people do not see people that are positive role models like them, they believe that they cannot aspire to be what that person does. So you hit the nail on the head, and that is part of systemic racism. Because systemic racism allows people to justify not allowing black people the same opportunities that are allowed to other people. So continue on, I just wanted to agree with you on that statement. Before I do, hold on. Tracy, Camilla, do you agree with that statement?
Your statement?
Yes, I agree with her statement 1,000%.
Thanks, Tracy.
Hi sweetie, how are you?
Okay, keep going, okay.
So I, one of the things that you mentioned, and I just kinda wanna hit on it, was the fact that the African-American folks were seen as disciplinarians, right? And part of that was putting them into the dean's system. And that was supposed to be a way to promote folks, when they get their license to be an administrator, they would start in the dean's system, and then they would work their way up. And some people just got caught in this dean's system. But then, last year, I believe it was last year, because that's when I really started to become entrenched in what was happening at school board level. They decided to remove the dean. And that was their way of moving up, right? That was the administrators' ways of moving up. And so it's like, well, how is that going to work if you get rid of the dean? And the administrators' union agreed, because that is the way. And so of course, the deans are back. But that was an issue that I thought was really kind of weird to me. And actually, so Dr. Young and I have a lot of the same thought processes, because she brought the same thing up during the trustee meetings. And I thought that was great, that I wasn't wrong in that that's how people were working their way up in the school district. So that was really great. I'd love to talk about the substitutes, if you wanted to talk about that.
Absolutely, we're gonna do multiple, we're actually gonna do multiple interviews with you. That again, can be another subject. And I definitely want to, if we can get to the time. But we're talking about, I kinda wanna talk about the whole structure of the teachers first. And then the students, obviously. And then the other issue, which is the business side of the school boards, which is always ignored. Everybody comes in, in the school board, and they talk about the kids. And they talk, but they don't talk a lot, number one, about the teachers, about the substance of real diversity. And so I appreciate you talking about that, to start off with the teachers and the administration and so forth. Now, there's a lot of, before we switch over and talk about the kids, which are the most important, but there's a lot of things going on with the school board here, the Clark County School Board, right now. Give me kind of your opinion, as an observer, of what you think is going on? And what you think the school board can do to bring some type of trust back to the communities, and some type of order?
So there are a couple of things that I think the school board needs to do. The first thing they need to do is explain what balanced governance is. Because people who are watching the school board meeting, especially last Wednesday, were thinking that if you publish an agenda, you have to complete the agenda, right? And it was not completed. And I have my own thought process on that. But when you talk about Robert's Rules of Order and Balanced Governance, they had a right to end the meeting. The issue is, why? And so people were just so upset that they ended the meeting, but no one was wondering why those four wanted to end the meeting. Those questions are not being asked. And I think it's because of the business side of the school board, which is what you wanna talk about. Because it's a business, they're not looking out for what's good for the district. They're looking out for what's good for whomever their business connections are, that told them they didn't want them to follow through with their agenda. And so I feel like that's what happened. I don't know who is aligned with whom, I don't really understand that. What I do understand is that some of the folks that are running are like me, and we're just looking out for what's good for the kids. And not just the kids, but the entire district and how it works. Because the thing is that their working environment are our students' learning environments. So if that working environment is not working, the students are not going to learn effectively. So I just feel like the dysfunction of the school board and the way that they act is contributing to the dysfunction at the school site.
Okay, great. Now, you mentioned some things before. We had to do a reboot that I found interesting, and I think is important. Many times the school boards who come in, the people come in as school board, they're only worried about their district, they're only worried about their area. And as long as their area is doing okay, to hell with everybody else. And that, for the black community, has caused a lot of problems. Dr. Young, and I give her credit, she has been one of seven. She has fought the good fight, and attempted to bring awareness, to try to deal with some of the issues that are disproportionately affecting the black students. But she's been a voice of one out of seven. What are your opinions on the fact that, obviously, you're representing Henderson, where I live, you're representing your area, and obviously, you want to represent your constituents? But you cannot ignore the other people in the dish, other kids. Because if we're brothers-keepers, you know, if Dr. Young's is struggling mightily, if they're the ones that are holding down, and there are different issues, sometimes we gotta focus on what's right. I'll give example. I have been, I'm an entrepreneur, as I was telling you earlier. And I've done some work in the schools, and I've seen the inequities. I've been over in Henderson, where everybody has a Chromebook, and everybody takes a Chromebook home. And I've been in Swanaken, where nobody has a Chromebook, they're all locked in, they're all locked in safe, and they use them sparingly. So even if we go to distance learning, they're so far behind the curve compared to the areas like Henderson, that if we believe just giving them Wi-Fi is the answer, then we're believing a lie. So give me your thoughts on that.
You have a lot in there. So the first that you do, I mean, because there's a lot, and I would love to just kinda break it down and talk to you about it, because those are the types of things I really enjoy discussing, because it's near and dear to my heart. But one of the things that I know, and this is because I work for a union, is I know how boards work. So we hold elections at the Nevada State Education Association. For every local, they have representatives that are supposed to sit on the state board. Once they sit on the state board, they're no longer just representing Winnemucca or Reno, they are representing the state of Nevada. So when they make a decision, they know that it is going to affect everyone in the state of Nevada, right? All of the educators in the state of Nevada have to follow what they do. So even though I represent District A, if I am lucky enough to be elected, once I sit on the dais, I don't just represent District A, I represent all of the students in the Clark County School District. Because when I make a decision, it's not just going to affect the students in Henderson and Laughlin and Searchlight, it's going to affect all of the students. So just know that I have that lens, and I take that very seriously. So that's the first part of what you asked. The second is the inequities that we see across the district. And the fact that they are holding Chromebooks from students, because they just can't afford to get them to be one-to-one, so they're on a cart, and they bring them out, and so the students do not, they're not able to become as proficient as they need to be on those Chromebooks in order to do distance learning. And that is horrific. And I know, because where I taught, when I first taught in Arizona, we did have a computer lab. It was the first time they had a computer lab, and I taught second grade. And they were just so excited to be in the computer lab, that they would forget to go to the restroom, and they would forget to do things, because they were just so excited that they were using this piece of technology. And I see that in our students that are in the areas where they lock up the Chromebooks. They get super excited when the lock is unlocked. And now that we're going to distance learning, and they have to use these Chromebooks that have been locked up forever. They also don't have the background knowledge to assist them in making them work. Like, for example, when you had technical difficulties, you innately knew that you needed to turn off your computer and restart it. Those students don't have that, because they haven't had that type of experience that some of the students in Henderson have had. If that makes any kind of sense. But so that really bothers me. I think that because of COVID, we're able to see those inequities, and we're able to say, okay, that's not okay. We need to figure out a way to make this work. But that's my thought on that. I'm sure I'm very wordy, I'm sorry.
No, no, I want you to tell me what you think, because I'm pretty wordy myself. Now, we're kinda moving into the students, which is where I wanted to go anyway. And we will have multiple discussions, because we could talk for hours, and we're gonna do that before the election. I told you, I actually was able to work in Swanaken for a period of time. And I went in there and took a challenge, because both eighth grade teachers were working, they had substitute teachers, who could not manage the classes, who could not manage the students who did not understand math. And they went for virtually a whole year with their eighth graders not understanding anything. This gives me knowledge, this is not secondhand knowledge. We have a major problem in the predominantly black areas, where we're testing them, but we're not teaching them. They do not have the adequate teachers in place. They don't know their basics, and I'm talking in math, but it goes into all of them. If you don't know your, in math, if you don't know your basic tables, if you don't know your divisions, if you don't know your multiplications, if you don't know the things that are the structures to go to pre-geometry, how do you expect somebody to pass? We're passing people through the system when we know that they are not needing the minimum requirements in certain areas. And it's not because of the students, because I literally saw kids that I worked with for a couple of months, go from F students to B and A students. I literally had kids tell me, "Mr. Harris, I'm finally learning." These kids wanna learn, but they're in a position to fail, because from the aspect, the majority of substitutes, if you track them, they go into the black and brown areas. The majority of good teachers, they go to the classes where it's easier. If I go out to Henderson, my day is not gonna be hectic. If I go into another area, man, I am beat. And then I gotta go home and deal with this stuff. So we have inequities. And I always call that systemic racism, allows us to ignore those equities, because my group is doing okay. And it must be these guys fought over here, because they're just lazy triflets. No, they're not being given the same opportunities. We have two school systems inside Clark County. We have the haves, and we have the have-nothings. And if we don't address the have-nothings, and start to really stop pushing them through the system, the prison-to-pipeline will continue. If we continue to push them through the system without educating them, we will continue to see what we're doing now. Give us your opinion on that thought, Lisa, and give us your opinion, before I give you mine, on some ways we could potentially address that and change the curve from black kids being kicked out of school, being basically, or being shepherded through the school with no education.
So this is a really sensitive subject for me, because I have been told that I am kind of a snob. Because I don't think that the teacher preparation is what it should be anymore. When I went to school in the Dark Ages, I had great professors, and there wasn't a Teach for America. There wasn't an alternative route to licensure. You went for four years to get your degree in education. And so in order to teach math, you had to be proficient in math. And you could not graduate from college unless you were. So for example, with my certification, I had to be proficient in teaching students how to speak and read English. That was, I mean, I had to know it. I had to go to classrooms, I had to teach foreign language. I mean, there was a lot of stuff that was involved. And I feel like when they corporatized education, when corporate America came in and said, "We can fix the educational system." You do not have to add any more money to the educational system. What we need to do is, we need to put people in the classroom through alternative certifications. Now, for CTE, I think that's great. But for teaching kids in any school, in any school, you need to have the background knowledge that I was taught. And I'll tell you, I don't think that we have teachers that have that background knowledge that go into the communities that you're speaking about. I just had a conversation with two of my really, they're rock star teachers, and they help teachers across the state get their National Board certification. And one of them told me that if I advocated for the state to make it so that it was flexible, they could go into the classroom, even if they had a library background for their certification, and they'd still get their bump in pay, that they would actually go into these schools. But it's because they're locked into, they have to teach this certain subject, that they can't. And these are the top-of-the-line educators. And I was like, yeah, I'm all in.
Let me throw something out to you. Because when you look at it, and this is one of the things, and I'm giving you from personal and firsthand experience.
Right.
The problem, and I'm using Swanaken, because I was there. The problem is, most of the good teachers don't wanna go there. They don't wanna handle it. So even if you do it, they will give a bump of 10%, so they'll try to get teachers who go there for the money. And they inherently burn out, and they just go on a early retirement.
But here's my question, I don't mean to interrupt you. Here's my question. How many of those teachers reflected the same skin color as the students?
You are right on the money, and that is the major problem too. Because there is, whether people wanna admit it or not, people have inherent biases. And if they are not looking like the majority of the people, and they don't understand their culture, and they're frustrated, because they're not like me, they're not easy, they're not this, then they give up on these kids. And that's one of the points, and you drove right to the home where I'm getting, is the school board needs to think a little bit out the box. You know what, they need to bring in teachers, more teachers that look like us.
Now, take a look at it. You could make so much more money if you worked at a casino, than if you got a degree and you taught students. I've looked at it, it's embarrassing how little we pay people. And you know, you raise families, you have, I mean, it is what it is. And it makes me sad. But I really feel like if we infused- And, and it, it makes me sad, but I really feel like if we infused money into education, we would get people to want to be teachers. They just, you know?
But let me give you a, a, another out the box thinking because not everyone wants to be teachers. And I'm gonna give you an example. I'm old enough that I was enjoying trying to make these, to prove that these kids can learn, but I'm not gonna do it for slave wages. What they need to do is we're in right now, an area of what I'm calling, where we have kids, we're, 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 we're losing the school system and we are too locked in, in the, the, the school. Probably even the, the teachers union would be opposed to something. But some of these areas where you can't get teachers in, bring in retired professionals. Bring in somebody like myself who has a background in engineering or has a strong math, but has no desire to be a teacher, but says, you know what? You don't have anybody for this semester. Pay me like I am a professional. Measure me by the, the, what I can do and I'll come in and, and, and I'm doing combat pay. I'll come in and do what I need to do because I understand the culture, I understand the people. And if you support me, I'll give you a better resolve. Because that's what I think they have to do is think out the box a little bit more and stop just having excuses to fail. Because the truth of the matter is there are a lot of people who would come in and help, but they're not gonna do it for slave labor. Uh, which brings back to the, the substitute teachers, but even the thought pattern. If I can't get enough teachers, then I need to go out and get people who are good as, as good as teachers. Because there are people who are not teachers, but they understand and can teach math. They don't want to be a teacher. They, but they'll come in and they'll help in the most difficult, in the difficult situations to get you through that. So we gotta think about that. The other question I'm asking, which also, I'm, I'm, I understand math by trade. With the shortage of teachers that this school system has and the amount of substitutes they are paying these ridiculously low wages. If they did their budgets right, there should be a major surplus in dollars. Because if they had put the dollars required to have these teachers in and they, they're paying them about one third or one fourth or sometimes one fifth of what they're paying a teacher and it's a significant amount of them, where's the money? Why are we not running a surplus right now versus what I was hearing? We need more money. We need more money. So either somebody is doing their budgeting incorrectly or the money is being spent frivolously because I have two sides. As a, uh, parent, obviously you want the school systems to run and, and put money, but I don't wanna throw money at something if all it's gonna do is require more consultants come in, more other people coming in who add no value in the money. You know, more administrators at the top are getting paid and you're not really seeing that going down to the teachers and to true learning. So another big question, give me your opinions on those.
I have them. Imagine that. So, um, I think Jason Gowdy, who is the CFO, does a really good job. The problem is AB469. And AB469, what it did is it broke up the school district into 500 different districts. Because every school has their own budget and they're their own district. And they've essentially made the principal a CEO of a company. And so they all have their budgets. And one of the things that happened during the last, um, special session was this big brouhaha because the schools have carry forward. And what carry forward is, is a large chunk of money that is not, um, put towards the central office. That's literally at the schools. Now, we didn't advocate for sweeps or anything like that, but that's something that Jason Gowdy was thinking. Well, the reason why we need so much money is because it's all at the schools and so we can't run the district. So, um, so it's like they're in a catch 22 with that. Um, because the schools need the money just to run. And then the district needs the money because they had to buy all these Chromebooks and things for the students, but they didn't get assistance from the schools. So it, there's a lot of things that need to be fixed within that AB469. Making sure that if you've budgeted for a certain amount, that that's the amount that you spent. Another thing is, and if you're on an SOT team, you know this, is that if you have budgeted for a teacher and you supposedly can't fill it, you fill it with a sub because it costs less money. And then you get to keep that money at that school. It doesn't go anywhere else. It just goes to that school. And so supposedly it's so that they can fill that spot the next year because they're going to request that money the next year for that position. And they may not be able to fill it again, so they fill it with a sub. And, and that's the vicious cycle that happens. One of the things that Tracy shared with me that I'm trying to get going again in the Clark County School District is that there used to be a substitute to teacher pipeline. So there were cadres of substitutes that were, that were specific to, um, areas or different schools that actually wanted to be in that, those areas. And they were part of the ESEA group, their union. So that meant that they had healthcare, they had, they had people negotiating for them so that they had a living wage, those types of things. So that people like you, instead of saying, I'm only making $85 a day, you actually had a wage. Am I right on that, Tracy? Yeah, cuz that's what I'm negotiating right now. And I'm like, no, they have to make a certain amount so to equal what they're supposed to be paid as a support professional. And if they choose to become a teacher, we have that kind of information for them. But if they don't and they wanna stay in this cadre, they stay in this cadre, they still get all of the benefits and everything of moving up.
Okay. And, and that's what I, it seems like some of these CEOs need to think more like a CEO then. Because like I said, just saving the money without doing something to improve your overall performance is crazy. It doesn't make any sense.
Right.
Uh, so, uh, now let's go talk a little bit more about what we're seeing. Uh, the black community, uh, both, uh, the black community's fallen behind educationally in these systems, unfortunately. Uh, I believe a lot of it is because the, of the structure, the cultures and a lot of issues that are being ignored. Uh, we have to come up with the solution. You will, um, let me put it this way. Uh, Clark County will continue to be last, close to last unless we address the issue, which is the biggest issue. So give me your opinions on what you think needs to happen uh, to potentially improve the performance of the black community in the school systems right now. Because I can guarantee you, you don't have to go, I don't have to do a consulting, charge a hundred thousand dollars to give you, uh, a study that says this. There's a direct correlation between poverty. There's a direct correlation between black folks and brown folks, but it's even more on black folks. And there's a direct correlation that and the performance of the overall school system. So if we stop trying to ignore the problem, the root cause, and address this issue, we would see Clark County become better. What are your thoughts on what we need to do? Uh, or what's your thoughts as far as what I just said, what we need to do?
So here's my first thought. I am not from the black community, so my first thought is to get the information from the black community. Because I think that with all my training on equity and diversity, with all of the information that I have on the school to prison pipeline, the true people who know what we need to do to fix it, live there, um, have their children there, work there, and they're the ones that need to tell me. And then I have to find a way to advocate for them. It's the same as what I do with the education and support professionals. I'm not working in the Clark County School District as an education support professional. I call people, I talk to people and I find out what they need, how they need it, and what I need to advocate for to make their lives better. That to me is really important. It's a communication piece that I haven't seen on the Clark County School District, except Dr. Young. She'll talk to me about it. She always has. She's been very open with me, um, and so has Belinda Cavassos. They both have been very, very open with me, told me what I needed, the information that I needed. Because I feel like if, if I come in as Lisa Guzman, the Jewish white girl, and tell you how your community is supposed to live, what an idiot I am, right? But if I come in and I say, hey, I have this position. I wanna advocate for you. You tell me. What is it that you see that I need to fix? I feel that that is a better conversation because I know who I am, right? And, um, and I know that if I come into a community and tell them what they need to do to get their education better, they're gonna look at me and tell me I'm an idiot. So I feel like they need to tell me and I wanna have that conversation. I'm open to that conversation. I've always said I'm open to the conversation. And I feel like that's the reason why when you emailed me, I was immediate, I wanted to talk to you because I thought you would give me that information so that I would know what I'm talking about.
That was a great answer. That was actually a great answer. It, it was.
That's from my heart. That is truly how I feel.
And, and I'm gonna tell you why. Let me kind of, uh, connect the dots. I've been trying to do this. There's a direct correlation between poverty and performance in school. Uh, right now, a lot of things that are going on in this world of fighting systemic racism is the same key to dealing with our educational problem.
Absolutely. I agree with you.
If we don't look at the fact of if we raise the prosperity level in the black community, the education will raise always. You'll never fix one without fixing the other. And so what we have to start understanding too is there's some things outside that unless we address them, and it's not just the school, but it's really addressing and understanding the root cause. And, and I'm gonna say this and give you a problem. The biggest problem right now is systemic racism across the board. And people don't understand when you say that systemic racism is tied to economics. Somebody's gotta be on the bottom. So why not let those guys be on the bottom all the time? So systemic racism keeps the ability for black families to get out of poverty. Uh, for black families to own and operate things, which that does affect your overall value and opinion yourself. So I'm gonna say your, your answer was correct and we're gonna have some more conversations about this cuz you're 100% right. But now I'm gonna connect the dots to the third issue that is never talked about with the school system and it goes back to systemic racism. It also goes back to the issue of how are we going to get better? We're not gonna get better until we address systemic racism. What, one of the biggest examples I give is the school system. The school system is a billion dollar industry. Their school system, when you look at their procurement, when you look at the fact that they build these multimillion dollar, um, schools, when you look at the fact that they have to provide goods and services on a daily basis, the amount of black businesses that are involved on the business side is dismal. Again, you don't have to go out and pay a bunch of consultants to come in and give you that answer and take a hundred thousand dollars or two hundred thousand dollars and tell you that. A blind man can see that. So one of the things that I am pushing when I talk to the school board is, uh, the, the people that are, what are we gonna do about real equality of opportunities when it comes to the building of schools, the maintenance of schools, the, um, the, the procurement? It could be anything but toilet paper. It could be something as simple as plastic spoons. It could be, uh, providing the paper. We now have conglomerates that you understand the good old boy system. They take people out to lunch. They make sure that the right people get the right stuff and they continue to get the contracts. And when you look at the percentage of businesses that are black owned, that do business, real business, it's dismal. And when you look at the amount of businesses that are not black owned and you look at throughout their, every level of the people in their organizations, we're slim to none. So I'm gonna turn the, the page a little bit and say, you're not gonna fix this while you ignore systemic racism. You're not gonna fix it. We need the schools to lead by example and say, we're not gonna continue to talk about diversity and everything we do from that side while we do nothing with the black community and we justify it, just like the Raiders stadium, just like everybody else. They lock us out and justify us not being in there and say, why don't you pick yourselves up from the boost that straps? Because the truth of the matter is, even if we start a business, if you've locked us out of the opportunities for our businesses to win the contracts that keep, that help us grow, you're not helping us. So that's, that's kind of a statement and a thought, but I need some commitment from the school board. Uh, people are running, that they're gonna address the inequalities of opportunity from a business side, uh, with the school system. We cannot continue to lock out black businesses. And that's a very key issue with me. Uh, before you answer Tracy, Kamala, do you agree with me there? Okay, thumb up.
Yes, I do.
Okay. So Lisa, now give me your thoughts on it.
So I have, I have a ton of thoughts because, um, because I wanna know how I can do what you're asking me to do. So I do know, this is what I know about the school board. And so this is where I need your help. If I am incorrect or you can give me guidance. Um, I know that, um, the trustees give the, um, the CFO, Jason Gowdy, certain things that they, they would like to see when they, uh, contract with the company. Normally, from what I understand, they have to be the least expensive. Am I wrong on this? But that's my understanding, is that they're supposed to be the least expensive. Now, whether they are or not, I have no idea cuz I'm not in the, the four work meetings, right? So I don't see what they see. But, um, but how will I know? How will I have like a cheat sheet of, um, folks who have bid on this job and find out why they're not getting the contract? Because I don't think that, uh, because I know Dr. Young, I don't think she would have approved a company if she knew that there was, um, a diverse company bidding on something, right? So I need a commitment from you all that you're gonna let me know so that when I walk into that meeting, you say, hey, there was a company that bid on this and they didn't get the contract, so don't approve it tonight. Find out why. I mean, that's something that I need, right? Because how am I going to know?
Well, that, that's why we're reaching out to all of the, 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 the school boards. I'm gonna give you my thoughts. Number one, from the superintendent down to the, everybody in the school board, there should be a scorecard. There should be a scorecard that is identifying real diversity, which means we're gonna look at it. People hate the word quotas. I don't because the truth of the matter is you gotta force some things to make them happen. But if you have a scorecard and you tie pay to performance of something that said, no, your diversity's not gonna say, okay, uh, we now have more women. And here's the thing, and I'll say this, uh, you being a white woman and me being a person who's black, the true diversity now is this. Uh, white men have figured it out. If I put my daughter, if I put my wife in business and now she wins the business, I move the pocket from the right pocket to the left pocket, but I continue to lock out my competition and we're celebrating diversity because, oh man, we're bringing more women in. And that's happening in the construction industry and everybody else where the numbers are designed to celebrate diversity while the dollars stay in the same pockets. It just goes from one, the left pocket to the right pocket.
But if there were. That's my, that's my race right there. Because, uh, I'm running against Liberty Levitt, who is Michael Roberson's wife. And, um, his, his company is donating to her campaign because we need diversity. So I hear you.
So i- if you, if you come up with some things that are directly, and, and, and it's funny, you can measure that measure, and I'm gonna tell you something. If you tie the performance that, you know, whether you wanna call it quo- If you tie the performance that, you know, whether you want to call it quotas, whether you want to call it, whatever you want to call it, I can guarantee you, just as we have these CEOs in the different schools that are now the principals, if a big chunk of their pay was, was determined on their ability to be fair and equitable on opportunity, they would reach out and bring in real business that is, that if we're 13% of the populace, we should not be 1% or 0.8% of the, uh, of the, the, the procurement side. If we're 13% of the populace, there should not be zero black contractors building schools or repairing schools. So I, I'll tell you how you do it is, you put a significant amount of paid performance and you divide, you design a, a diversity, that's a true diversity appeal, that is not just designed for people to hand slap on the front while business happens as usual. And so that is something that is not talked about because usually we talk about the kids, which is important. We talk about improving education, but we ignore the true problems of education. Because the thing about it is, if everybody looked that way in, in the state of Nevada, you would see the tide rise in the black human community economically. They would be able to buy houses. They would be able to pay their bills. Their kids would be able to be in an area of feeling secure, and they would have more opportunities to learn and grow. And I use it as an example. I live in Henderson. My kids have always been in a sustainable area where they lived in a place that was owned by us, where they did not worry about where their next meal was coming from, where they had a sustained family unit. Because the biggest thing that divides up families is usually finance. So you want to fix, you cannot fix education until you fix the root causes of why the poorest of the poor end up being the ones that are promised, that are, are causing us to have such low numbers. And we can lead by example with the school board. We can lead by example with the regions. We can force the issue on the school, on, on, on the government, which is supposed to be, right now, keeping the numbers, but they don't do it. We got to stop faking the funk, as we used to call in the old days, and talking about wanting to do something, but while trying to keep systemic, uh, systemic racism and the good old boy system back and keep it as it is. Ma- America wasn't great in the past, so I don't want to make America great now. I want to make America great in the future by changing and, and destroying systemic racism so that we will then see true benefits to everybody. So I'm, get off my soapbox. I'm sorry. I'm very passionate on the business side.
I appreciate this because if you look at it, the school district is one of the largest, um, employers in each county. So this is an important piece that I need to know that I didn't know. And I'm willing to admit what I don't know. And I'm always going to ask for guidance. If someone comes to me and says, there's something going on, you need to find out, I will. I think that's really an important thing that we don't have now on the, the school board, are enough people willing to listen and stand up for it. I don't know if you've noticed, but I am a really assertive person, and I talk a lot. So I will be, I will not be quiet on the dais, especially if I think, if I feel passionately about something. Um, and this is something that equity and diversity is something that I really feel passionate about. And it, it could be because I think about my kids when, when I advocate for it. I'm not going to apologize for that, but I do feel that it's really important. I think it's important for all the kids' communities to have someone who's going to advocate for them. And if, um, financial stability is going to be something that I can provide to a community just by asking questions, I think that's really important.
I believe the school systems can, if they understand and connect the dots, they can be the ones who lead us out of the darkness. Because if they continue to ignore the root cause and continue to just throw money at it, or continue to, to have, as you said, and I appreciate it, have people who don't look like me trying to figure out a problem that they don't even know, then they're going to continue to get the answers that they think are the answers versus the real problems, root causes and solutions. I'm an engineer by trade, so I look at root cause. I look at, okay, I'm not going to put a Band-Aid on it. I'm going to, uh, you know, on a major article, let's find out what the problem is and let's fix it. But then that means you have to look at the real problem, not what people feel comfortable talking about. So.
And I'm a teacher. I'm a teacher by trade, so I'm always going to look for the background knowledge, right, Tracy? Poor Tracy got caught on a two-hour phone call with me because I just kept asking questions because I wanted to know the background. No, you're fine. So that I could do the right thing.
Yep. I'm going to tell you, right now, I got some really, uh, the feedback, the, the two young ladies that are on here and some other people, we did, we vetted, I vetted you by vetting them. Uh, the, the independent black voters, we will endorse as many candidates as we can. Uh, so I'm going to go on a limb today, Lisa, and say that the independent black voters are going to endorse you for your, uh, for your run here, and we're going to try to help you win.
That's so amazing. I am just so touched because I just, that's, that's amazing. So just know that you always can call me, text me. I'm always going to listen.
I do have a quick question, if that's okay?
Oh, sure.
So, um, you had mentioned, um, we were talking a little bit, I'm, I'm really committed to, um, increasing black leadership within the district. And you did mention that, that you, um, you, I think you said you met like four black principals, was it at the high school level?
Yeah.
And I, I was having a conversation with some educators today, and I was saying, I was so passionate and just frustrated about the fact that I could literally count on my hands how many black leadership is in the high school level. And typically what I've noticed and seen is that a lot of our black leadership are in like the middle school, the elementary levels.
Right.
And, um, so you have talked a little bit about how systemic race, racism has negotiated its way in our hiring practice. So I am interested to know, and you, I, you talked about the substitute to teacher pipeline. So I created this little term like this now, black to leadership, or black to black, black to black leadership pipeline. So I would like to know, um, oh, so I would like to know, um, how, in regards to, um, if you're, if you're elected as the trustee, what power do you have or authority will you have as a trustee member to create a, a black to leadership pipeline that supports a pathway for leadership for black people? And, you know, black people are very talented, and I, it, it really just irritates me that we even have to have a title called black this or black that because it, it, you know, this is 2020. And, you know, we think that practices are going to be equitable, but you've seen firsthand in your experiences for people, like seriously, what that says to students is that black people are not worthy, qualified to be in positions of leadership, and that we just are not able to, um, lead schools and lead our communities. So, um, what power and authority would you have as a trustee to implement a pathway for black leadership? And also, um, and if you don't have that authority to do that, what, um, type of, um, plan can we put into place for the superintendent to make this a priority that is a part of their contract?
So that's a really great question, and I love it, um, because Tracy's the one who gave me the substitute to teacher pipeline. Um, I won't ever take credit for that because it was totally Tracy when we had our two-hour conversation. Um, but the, the thing is that what I have the power, if I am a trustee, um, what I have the power is to demand that there is diversity when there is consider, consideration for certain positions. I can demand that. Another thing I can do is I can, um, start a leadership development program within the P E F. I don't know if you are aware of the Public Education Foundation, but C C S D gives them a lot of money. They're supposedly supposed to give C C S D money, but when it comes to leadership development, um, C C S D gives them money. And I can, um, request that if we're going to give that type of money to the Public Education Foundation, that they create, um, a leadership, uh, development for black educators that are looking to get into leadership positions. And I think that's a key start, right? Is to actually find out who wants to be in a leadership position and then go from there. But I think what would be even, um, more powerful is if we started a committee and we created a committee from the, the folks that are actually already in those positions, and they help nurture and mentor those people so that they know the right things to say in an interview. They know exactly what, what the district is looking for. So, because the thing is, we already have people with PhDs and certifications to be principals out there. What they don't have is interview process, right? And I think sometimes we, um, for me, the reason why I didn't go any higher than where I am is I'm, I stink at interviews, you know? But just kind of getting a mentor to actually, um, get them so that they can get past that, I think is also really good. But I think it's something that a trustee can start, right? It's a process that we can start. It's not a process that we can control, but it definitely is a process that can start. Does that make sense?
Yes. So who controls it? You said it's a process that you could start, but who controls, who controls the process?
It's the regional superintendents. People, they're the, the most underspoken about group. Because the regional superintendents are in charge of hiring supervisors and principals and things like that in their regions. So it's that group that I would target to make sure that they are looking at diversity when they are hiring principals. Um, I'll be honest with you, people don't talk about them. They're always like in the background. No one says anything, but I know they control things. The superintendent gets all of his information from the regional superintendents about what's happening around the district. He has too much going on in his little ivory tower, um, to know what's happening actually on the ground, and he depends on them to inform him.
And I guarantee you, none of them look like me.
Oh, no. Absolutely not.
See, see, I'm gonna give you something to think about. And, and people, if you want to understand systemic racism, the good thing is to look at, uh, a good example with sports, specifically baseball, I mean, basketball and football. While, uh, African-Americans or, uh, men are less than 6% of the total populace in the United States, we demand, we command over 50-plus percent of the stars and the, uh, people in profession, major professional basketball and football. Why is because somebody, it's about performance, and somebody doesn't have an arbitraried view of what you can and cannot not do. Unfortunately, when you're in corporate America, unfortunately, when you're in school systems, unfortunately, when somebody is now getting to use their biases to select, that's when we don't get hired because now it's not about raw talent. It's about whether somebody is comfortable with you, whether somebody feels you fit the mold of what they think they are. And that's systemic racism, and we have to break it by talking about it. We have to talk to these people that are behind the scenes pulling this, we got to open up their kimonas and know who they are. They have to know that we're going to start challenging them. We have to tie, um, financial gains and losses to their abilities to literally control their biases. And if we start to do that, we will be successful. You will never get people to give up all of their biases, but they can control their biases if you put a dollar figure on it.
See, if, if they've identified it. So the thing about biases, and I know this because I've, I've gone through the training, and I am a trainer for implicit bias, is that sometimes even when we know our biases, we think, oh, that can't really be my bias, and it totally is. Um, and, and I really feel like there are some folks, like myself, I know I have an implicit bias against, uh, white men that are six foot. I, I do. I, I know that sounds crazy because you're probably thinking, well, your dad is probably that, and absolutely he is, and so is my brother. But when it comes to business, I will wear high heels because I want to be able to look into their eyes because I know that they're thinking, oh, this little woman, she thinks she knows what she's talking about. Now, they may not be thinking that, but that's my implicit bias that I give to them walking in the room, right?
Yes.
And so knowing what the implicit bias is, acknowledging it, making sure that you know that when you walk into the room, that's not really what they're thinking, that's what you're thinking. Those are the types of things that I think that the regional superintendents need to go through because they went through some online thing that is ridiculous.
Absolutely. It's a good old boy system. But, uh, Lisa, what we're going to do now, because we could talk for hours and hours and hours. And I know that my, uh, viewers have only so much of an attention span. We're going to post this on the Independent Black Voters. I'm going to ask everybody here to send it to your friends and ask them to watch it. Uh, as I said, uh, I thank you because Tracy, I take, I, you and I talked. Uh, I don't go in and endorse people a lot on their first interview, but I have a lot of respect for the ladies here, and, uh, what you said, what you said kind of sealed the deal, uh, that you are probably the right person to drive change. Um, so we're going to talk offline some more, but we're going to have you on here multiple times because you have to spend time getting to know our community, letting them know who you are. Not just there, but also we'll talk in Henderson. There's some places that you need to go and you need to do if you want to win. So.
Absolutely. I'm in.
Okay, so I'm going to end this by thanking all three of you lovely, uh, people for taking the time to get here and talk, for not just on camera, but off camera, helping to educate me on education. Uh, I want to watch, wish Lisa much success. We want to see you win. Uh, and that's what we're going to, we're committing to do, is help our candidates win. Um, so we'll be, we'll have you on. I ask you to go on the Independent Black Voters rant, take it out. Uh, I'm sorry, take a minute, uh, Tracy, take a minute, go on it. We want you to talk about yourself. We want you to then talk about some of the ills and some of the things you're trying to fix. People can use, they take small bites, but if you don't say anything, you're not trying to win our vote. But if you start to kind of break things down to us and educate us, that's how you win our votes. And the Independent Black Voters, that's a place to start, not the place to finish, but we'll help you get to the finish line.
Thank you.
Yep. Uh, do you folks, Tracy, Kamala, do you have anything to say before I end this Zoom call?
No, that's pretty much it for now. I do look forward to speaking with you some more, Mrs. Goodman. And, um, thank you for taking this time out to speak with us. You will, you'll be hearing from me.
I'm excited to hear from you as, um, but you, you should know, as I'm sure Tracy has told you guys, I ask a lot of questions because I want to, I want to do the right thing.
Absolutely.
Anything, Tracy?
You may not see it at first, but if you call me, I'll tell you what I've done.
Okay.
Tracy, you got anything?
Um, I'm just going to echo what everybody else has said, and, um, just two quick things. Number one, as far as the associate superintendents, there's only two that I'm aware of, which is Elena Kriner in Zone One, and Dr. Sam Skavala, I believe he's in Zone Three, over by Valley.
And then Brenda. Brenda is the third.
Brenda.
Brenda Larson, something, something.
Brenda Larson Mitchell?
Mm-hmm.
She's a deputy, but she's, um, um, I'm thinking about Nadine Jones, but she's leaving or she's gone.
And she was Human Resources, a really great. And she was human resources, a really great, really great person to work with. She was human resources.
Okay, so then that means then we're down to two. Because Brenda's Caucasian. Brenda Larson Mitchell. Yeah, if we're talking about the same one, she's Caucasian. But as far as African American, there's two. And I want to make sure that Autumn Tampa has the credit about the PSTs. I believe that's what you're referring to, the permanent substitute teachers. Yeah, she was working with E S C A with that.
You're the one who told me about it, though.
Oh, okay, got you.
All right, folks, we're going to end this now. I want to say things. First of all, I thank my listeners and I thank the folks on here. Folks, now, if not now, then when? We have really the opportunity to make change. Change comes from first addressing the issues. Change comes from changing the people that are running the ship. If the ship is headed in the wrong direction, we must change it. We must address systemic racism. Why is it so important that we are involved in not just the school board, whether historic West Side, but all of them? Because we win as a team. I tell people, black power is a three-legged stool requiring social justice, economic might in our political agenda. Not the Democrats nor the Republicans, but ours. On a three-legged stool, if you lose one leg, it falls over. So where does this come from schools? If we don't have a small, a, a strong base of education, we will never have economic might. If we do not understand how economics ties into education, not just on educational, but also on the business side, we will continue to let systemic racism thrive. We must, we must break down and smash the barriers that are there keeping us at the bottom. Because when we, when we rise, so does the state rise in education. But we have to stop looking at the Band-Aids, start looking at the root causes and start supporting those willing to make the hard changes and not the easy changes. So I thank you, Lisa, for coming on. You are our first candidate of many for the school board. We will be talking to you all the way up till November because we want you to win.
That's great.
Independent Black Voters. We're, we're, we're signing off now. And Lisa, give them your contact information and a quick minute on why you should be the candidate.
So my contact information is on lisa guzman, that's G U Z M A N for trustee.com. I'm also on Facebook, which is Lisa Guzman for trustee. And I'm on Twitter. If you follow me, it's L M Guzman N V for Nevada. And you can, you can text me, you can DM me. I am always available. And I believe that you should vote for me for trustee because at least you know that with me, I will listen and advocate for your issue.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to end this. Hold on, don't go away, you all. I'm, I'm ending the recording.